Good morning. We are waiting on a few of our early presenters, so we will get started in just a couple minutes. Recompense, Fletcher. Okay, so we're going to get started here in just a few minutes. Now, a lot of us, we've been through this in a lot of meetings, so I respect everyone's right to be here. I respect your right to speak. But what we're not going to do is interrupt other people's right to speak, and we're not going to interrupt the conduct and operations of the board. Hold on. Now, if we can do this, then everyone's going to have a right to speak, and we will have this entire board meeting with people in the chambers. But if the conduct of the chambers is disruptive to other speakers, or the conduct is disruptive to the functioning of the board meeting, then we won't have a choice. We have an obligation to conduct our board meeting. We have an obligation to make sure that every speaker has the right to participate. Board members have the right to deliberate. And so what we're going to ask is that everyone, your right to speak is not going to be interrupted, and I'm not going to let anyone infringe on that. But that extends to everyone who is here, which means we're not going to interrupt other folks who are here either. So whether I agree with you or disagree with you is completely irrelevant to your right to be here and your right to be heard. And everyone today will be heard. The question is, can the chambers not be disruptive to the conduct of the meeting? And I want everyone to finish the day who wants to sit here and be here all day. I want you to be able to sit here and participate in this meeting all day long. I genuinely do. But that means we cannot be disruptive to the conduct of the meeting. So I'm asking the leaders of organizations out there to help us as we get through this, because we want everyone to be able to participate fully in this meeting throughout the entirety of it. And that means we're not going to disrupt individual speakers, nor the conduct or operations of the board. With that, we are waiting on a couple other folks to join us to start our meeting, and then we'll get started. So just a minute or two, and then we'll get going. All right, ready? Good morning. I will now call the August 31st, 2021 San Diego County Board of Supervisors' regular meeting to order. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher, Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Lawson Reamer.
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
Vice Chair Vargas.
Vargas here.
Chair Fletcher.
Fletcher here. We will begin with the invocation. The invocation will be delivered by Bishop Ramon Beherano. Bishop, we welcome you. Thank you for joining us. We invite you to the podium to lead us in the invocation this morning. Please stand.
Gracious and loving God, we turn to you, who are our hope and refuge. I lift up my prayers this morning in union with many other residents of this county as we ask for your blessings upon our cities, county, nation, and world. I pray this morning for our county Board of Supervisors. You have given them the authority to make decisions that will serve the common good and the well-being of our county's residents. Give them wisdom, courage, perseverance, and a spirit of unity. Bless the supervisor staff and bless the work of all the different county departments. Increase our awareness and love for every human life. Keep safe those who work in the health system and those who continue to provide so much relief and recovery in the midst of the pandemic. Bless the repeated efforts to bring the vaccine to every person who are able to receive it. Help and guide our teachers, students, and their families as we begin the new academic year and keep them safe. Protect our law enforcement and those who protect us here at home. Protect our troops. We especially pray for the 13 members of our military who were killed last week in Afghanistan. I pray you give consolation and peace to their families. You know the different trials we face in our planet. We pray for the people of the world, and especially at this time for those in Afghanistan and Haiti, and all those who are in the midst of disaster or social unrest. May your merciful hand be upon all those affected by Hurricane Ida and those affected by natural disasters. Give strength to firefighters as they seek to control the different forest fires in our nation and those in other parts of the earth. To all of us who live here in our county of San Diego, inspire us to be united and to work together for the good of every resident. Heal any divisions and teach us to respect our differences as we value everyone's contribution. Give us the mind and heart to protect the vulnerable, the sick, the hungry, all those in our community who need a hand to lift them up. Teach us how to help those who are getting out of the criminal justice so that they can rebuild their lives and become productive members of our communities. And I thank you for all the businesses that provide a dignified job, assist those businesses that are recovering from the pandemic, and those who are jobless to find a right employment. You know the intense drought that we are facing in this part of our nation. Give us, Lord, the necessary rain and snow to our lands and mountains. Help us to preserve and use wisely the resources we have in our land and oceans. Bless our families and keep us safe. Amen.
Thank you, Bishop Beherano. We appreciate you joining us. We thank you for your time and that wonderful prayer. The Pledge of Allegiance will be delivered by Mrs. Loner's Transitional Kindergarten Class at McMillan Elementary in Chula Vista. Following their leading us in the pledge, they will have a special little song for us. So, Mr. Loner, we will turn it over to you, and we appreciate your students joining us today.
We appreciate being here. Thank you. All right, TK, two feet on a leash. And here we go. This is my left hand. I reach it up high. This is my right hand. I touch the sky. Left hand, right hand, roll them. Left hand, right hand, over my heart, come. Eyes on the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. So the flag, the flag looks like the colors of white and blue. It stands for children and their heritage. This flag is made for children. And white, blue, and white, blue. On the flag, our flag, we walk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, McMillan Elementary.
Thank you for the opportunity. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Before we begin with our order of business today, we'd like to observe a moment of silence for the 13 service members who were recently killed in Afghanistan. At the conclusion of our moment of silence, Supervisor Desmond will read the names of each of the service members as he represents our Camp Pendleton district. I know our hearts are heavy, both as a veteran of multiple combat deployments and as the proud father of a Marine Corps son who was deployed with the Marine Corps today. Our deepest condolences to the families and the individuals who gave their life trying to secure the freedom of others. And so we will take a moment of silence, and Supervisor Desmond will read the names.
Okay, with heavy heart, we thank and honor and salute our service members of the United States of America. Thirteen American service members were tragically killed on August 26th in a terrorist attack outside of the Kabul airport. I'll read their names and their age and where they're from. Staff Sergeant Darren Hoover, 31, of Salt Lake City. Corporal Hunter Lopez, age 22, of Indio, California. Corporal Deegan Page, 23, of Omaha, Nebraska. Corporal Humberto Sanchez, 22, of Logan's Port, Indiana. Lance Corporal David Espinosa, 20, of Rio Bravo, Texas. Lance Corporal Riley J. McCollum, age 20, of Jackson, Wyoming. Lance Corporal Dylan Marola, 20, of Rancho Cucamonga, California. Lance Corporal Karine Nikuli, 20, of Norco, California. Navy Corpsman Maxton Soviak, age 22, of Berlin Heights, Ohio. Lance Corporal Jared Schmitz, 20, of St. Charles, Missouri. Staff Sergeant Ryan Noss, age 23, of Corrington, Tennessee. Sergeant Johnny Rosario Pachardo, age 25, of Lawrence, Massachusetts. And Sergeant Nicole G., 23, of Sacramento, California. Please keep all of these young men and women and your thoughts and prayers, and our deepest condolences go out to all of their families and loved ones from the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. So we're going to get started with our business before the board today. We have a number of items we have to work through. We have a number of speakers. We will get our processes, our proclamations. We will hear from 10 non-adjourned public speakers, five in person, five on the phone. Adopt a consent calendar and then begin working through our agenda. We will recess at 11:30 for a lunch break, reconvene in the afternoon, and continue until we have completed the file order in agenda order. And so with that, we will begin with our proclamations. Vice Chair Vargas will present the first proclamation honoring South Bay Community Services. And accepting this proclamation will be Kathy Limbo.
Good morning. It is truly my pleasure today to be here, and I'm so excited to recognize SBC as former South Bay Community Services on celebrating 50 years worth of strengthening in our community's children, youth, and families in South Bay and throughout San Diego County. They were founded in 1971, and SBC has grown and formed integral partnerships with other organizations throughout the county and the communities they serve. Over 500 staff members dedicated to building a healthier tomorrow by best serving its community through their work in schools, public safety, family resource centers, and affordable housing locations. SBC offers food and housing assistance, ILS, employment readiness, financial literacy, mental health counseling, domestic violence, child abuse prevention, juvenile crimes prevention, therapeutic educational programming, and community stabilization services. Annually, SBC serves over 50,000 individuals and families, and this year, I am so proud of them. This year, they were leading a group of providers in saving and improving the lives of over 3,000 children. 3,000 children at the San Diego Emergency Intake Shelter, an experience that will undoubtedly improve the fabric of our region for generations to come. We are so excited to proclaim August 31st, 2021, SBC Day in San Diego County in honor of their 50th anniversary, and I hope they continue to do their remarkable service to our region for at least another 50 years. And I do want to personally say that Kathy Limbo is a superstar. The work that she does, leading our community, always stepping up when people need it the most. And through this pandemic, they have helped more people and have been there for them unconditionally and without question. So thank you and bless all your staff and your family, everybody. You are all amazing. So muchisima gracias. Thank you. Go ahead, Kathy.
I guess I just speak into the mic. Thank you, Vice Chair Vargas, and Chair Nathan Fletcher, and the board members. Also Helen, the CEO, and Nick, the head of Health and Human Services. I thank you for all your support and partnership throughout the years. But who I thank the most is the people in the community that we partner with and we serve. The young people who are struggling, the families that are dealing with different kinds of violence perpetrated upon them, and also the people that are struggling in so many different ways. But the thing that humbles me so much is how they always rise to the occasion to take care of each other. I am so impressed on their strength and their resiliency. During this last year and a half, they rose to the occasion, providing childcare assistance to healthcare providers' children and first responders' children in their neighborhood. Providing online school assistance to young people that were struggling. And also providing services to the seniors in our community, bringing them food and just visiting them because they were isolated. And also helping them get vaccination appointments. I thank these community members more than anyone else for all they do for their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy, and thank you to South Bay Community Services for all you do, and in particular, in the last difficult few years, everything you stepped up to help us with. The next proclamation will be given by Supervisor Tara Lawson-Reamer honoring Muslim Appreciation Month. We will turn it over to Supervisor Lawson-Reamer. Accepting this proclamation will be Tazim Kinam. We welcome you to our Board of Supervisors meeting. Come on now. Hey, look, look. Yeah, we can't outburst and interrupt, okay? Help me out as we go along here, and let's all get through this, respecting everyone's right to speak and be heard. Supervisor Lawson-Reamer?
Thank you. It's my honor to declare August as Muslim Appreciation Month. Over the centuries, and still to this day, the Muslim community has made innumerable contributions to the sciences, architecture, culture, and much more. In California, home to 1/3 of Americans' Muslim population, with the majority of them living in Southern California. San Diego Muslim Appreciation Month promotes and encourages awareness of the significant contributions made by the county's Muslim population in our day-to-day life, including education, politics, business, and technology. And during this pandemic, we have seen you. Muslim organizations have really stepped up to provide food and shelter and be a bridge to our efforts as a county as we tackle the COVID-19 crisis. Just last week, our team was out in the community helping provide backpacks and school supplies as students returned to school in collaboration with our Muslim friends. Thank you for all the work you are doing, truly an example of service to our community and our region. It is my honor to recognize this month as San Diego County Muslim Appreciation Month. We are joined by my good friend Tazim Nizam and members of the Muslim community who will be accepting this proclamation.
Thank you, Supervisor Lawson-Reamer, for your kind remarks. Thank you, Board of Supervisors and staff, for having us here today and giving us this honor. Assalamualaikum, everyone. Peace be upon you. My name is Tazim Nizam, and I'm the Executive Director of the CARE San Diego Chapter, Council on American Islamic Relations. Council of American Islamic Relations works every day to empower Muslim community members and give them the tools that they need to succeed. We welcome this proclamation by the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. My elders and I, Brother Aziz Permal and Sister Amira Abdullah, are honored to receive this on behalf of the almost 100,000 Muslim residents of San Diego County. The Muslim population is dedicated to betterment of this beautiful county and its diverse residents. We are business owners, doctors, engineers, clergy, educators, law enforcement officers, entertainments, and students, homemakers, people from all walks of life. This proclamation is a gesture recognizing the many contributions the Muslim community has made to San Diego County. As we stand here today, we ask that the Board of Supervisors continue their commitment to the immigrant communities for our new brothers and sisters arriving from Afghanistan and extend social services in helping them make San Diego their new home. We thank the Board of Supervisors for demonstrating the county's commitment to inclusivity and equity. Thank you to my staff members, Alina Nawabi and Umar Khan, for their dedicated service. Last but not least, thank you to my friend and little brother Supriyana Vargas for helping me get here. Thank you all. God bless you. Thanks for being part of history.
Thank you all. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for all the work that you do. The final proclamation will be given by Supervisor Jim Desmond honoring the San Diego Sexual Assault Response Team. Accepting this proclamation will be Andrew Parr.
All right. It's just Andrew. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. Come on now, come on, come on, come on, come on. This is the team, right? All right, good morning, everyone. Today, I'm very pleased to honor the San Diego Sexual Assault Response Team. These are the angels of our community that go out on these horrific crimes and deal with those victims of sexual assault crimes. And we're here today to present them the proclamation for their continued service and leadership over the last 30 years in providing victims sensitive, emotional support, and medical and forensic care for the victims of sexual assault. The County of San Diego, including the District Attorney's Office, are committed to recognizing the Sexual Assault Response Team for their dedication and best practices in promoting a society that is responsive to the victims and the survivors and their families, and that our community holds the offenders accountable. Today, on August 31st, 2021, the San Diego County Board of Supervisors commends the Sexual Assault Response Team for their outstanding responsive service and commitment to the community and do hereby declare today, this day, to be Sexual Assault Response Team Day throughout San Diego County, and Andrew Parr will be taking the proclamation on their behalf. Thank you. Do you want to get a picture with everybody in here?
Yeah.
Can we go in the wall?
Okay, in the wall? All right.
Great.
Come on, come on, come on. That's when a very good-looking San Diego lifeguard came up and said, "You can't sit here." And I said, "Huh?" And he said, "You can go down the beach where I can't see you." And I said, "But you can't see my son." And he said I had to keep moving, so that's what I did. I complied with what the government asked me to do, and for 90 minutes in the sand in La Jolla, I did this. I successfully avoided COVID that day. So, you see, two weeks later, I live in La Mesa, and three buildings were burned down. And that's when I saw public health officials say that it was safe to protest and to riot, that you wouldn't get COVID doing that, from just two weeks before, when they said going to the beach would kill you. So, let me just say, if you're at all concerned about misinformation, please hold up a mirror, because the misinformation is coming from you.
So, my name is Mike Borrello from Carlsbad. I assure you what I'm about to read is not misinformation. This comes from the government website, CDC VAERS report under the Wonder database. Deaths associated with the three COVID vaccines, numbers 13,627 deaths. Thirty-six percent of these deaths occurred within two days of injection. According to the Mayo Clinic, there's been about 200 million people in the U.S. that have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine over the nine months they've been administered. By comparison, the 14 seasonal influenza vaccines that amount to about 3 billion doses and administered over the last 30 years are associated with only 1,950 deaths. Consider these additional statistics for the COVID-19 vaccines. 14,104 life-threatening events, 43% of which occurred within two days. 17,794 permanent disabilities, 53% of which occurred within two days. 55,821 hospitalized, 40% of which occurred within two days. 74,312 emergency room visits, 62% of which occurred within two days. 100,965 office visits, 54% of which occurred within two days. 566 miscarriages, 40% of which occurred within the two days. The high percentage of events within a couple days of injection of the COVID vaccines and a disproportionate comparison with the number of flu vaccine events suggests the COVID-19 vaccine is indeed causing these events to happen. The number of deaths, life-threatening events, and permanent disabilities never seen before in the history of medicine, including the thalidomide tragedy of the 1950s.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
And it's far surpassed the lies taken in the 9/11 Twin Towers tragedy.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
My name is Louis Euradel, Metro Flex Gym Oceanside. For my non-agenda, I'll be speaking to COVID response. The same people who sell the panic are the same ones selling the cure. Each year, 2.8 million people die from the effects of obesity. That's 7,671 people per day. Yet, we don't have mandates, recommendations, or even a friendly suggestion from our health and government officials to do anything to prevent something that is 100% preventable. Where is the health crisis or the pandemic for obesity issue in the United States? We don't hear a peep from Dr. Wooton or our Board of Supervisors. Maybe you would mandate the number of cheeseburgers someone can buy, or say someone who's obese can't eat at certain restaurants. Of course not. That's absurd, because why would people have the freedom to choose to put something in their own body, even if it makes them more likely to get sick and put others at the risk of COVID? Still don't think COVID, obesity is an issue in the COVID response? The obesity rate in Japan is 3.5% compared to 42.4% in the United States. That's a 12 times higher obesity rate. As many as 15 times more people died in the U.S. in Japan, and our population is only 2.6 times bigger. That's a ratio of roughly six times more deaths in the United States, if only there was a vaccine for hypocrisy. Stop saying, stop saying you care about health and saving lives while pushing masks and shots. If it were really about health, why are lifesaving drugs like insulin inhalers and dialysis so expensive? In May of 2020, I opened my gym despite tyrannical lockdown orders. I was arrested, cited, and threatened by this county, and I'm still here. I encourage all San Diegans to stand up against any mandate they feel in their heart is inherently wrong or unjust. I stand with the health of professionals and police and firefighters, last year heroes now on the verge of being thrown in the garbage by mandates fueled by identity politics and virtue signaling. You are all serial heroes to me, and do not endorse the cowardly actions of our government towards you. We, the people, Nathan Fletcher, will not comply with one more inch of our freedoms being taken away. There are no strings on me.
Good evening. Good morning. My name is Albert B. Scholl III. I'm a 40-year-plus resident of California and a fearless German-American. Good to see you, public servants. I come bearing gifts for all of you, and everlasting, and an empathetic plea. My words may be misinterpreted, but they come from a place of everlasting love, compassion, and respect for your fears and misunderstandings. Yet, my concern for our children's future supersedes your lack of humility and thirst of control. I've pushed back since day one against the lockdowns and non-scientific mandates with music, art, countless protests, and events. I'm a sociologist, artist, and special needs art teacher. I'm the father of three one-children serving as a Navy medic. I'm a husband of a preschool teacher who's been on the ground teaching the entire time. I'm the son of a Top Gun Navy pilot that served on the Midway. I come from a family of warriors. I'm here today with the blood of Sophie and Hans Scholl running through my veins. They were executed for being part of a small percent of German people that had the courage to speak out against the Nazis. They were the right rose. They put out warnings of mass genocide, and World War II's anniversary is tomorrow. What resulted were the execution of Nazi soldiers, doctors, scientists, media propagandists, politicians, and the Nuremberg codes. I have experienced many vaccine injuries within my family and my circle of friends, work with the population of vaccine-injured childrens. This fax and mask campaign is not a one-size-fits-all. My entire family is imploding based on our choice and risk assessment to not become part of the largest experiment to hit mankind, a never-ending fear-based reaction to include a lifelong coercive, threatening campaign for boosters to maintain one's first-class medical cynicismry. Children will not be your shields for this insane-based mass psychosis. I look you today and sing your pseudoscience song louder and louder to drown out the screams of the citizens in the passing trains headed to the death camps.
Thank you, sir. Sir, thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Final call for Beau Nielsen. Beau Nielsen? We're waiting for Beau to come into the chamber. We'll go ahead and hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We'll be calling speakers by the last four digits of their phone number. You'll hear a notification that your call has been unmuted. You will then need to press star six to unmute your phone. Each caller will be asked to state their name for the audio record. You will have two minutes to address the board. I'll remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. And if you could please identify our first caller.
Our first caller is 1-822-1-822. Please press star six to unmute.
Good morning. My name is Peggy Walker. I'm here today as we observe National Suicide Awareness Month in September to share results from the new National Institute of Health survey of nearly 300,000 young adults. It shows the odds of people aged 18 to 35 thinking about suicide were 50% higher among those who used marijuana. The study said that mechanisms in the brain dysregulated by cannabis contribute to suicidal thoughts and violence, and stated that suicide is the leading cause of death among young adults and second-leading cause of death among 10 to 34. I know three families who lost college-age sons to marijuana-related suicides. Johnny, for one, began dabbing at age 14 at a high school party. Intelligent, funny, with a four-point GPA and college scholarship, he couldn't stop his use. Three days before he died by suicide at age 19, Johnny left a note for his mom saying, "You were right. You told me marijuana would hurt my brain. It's ruined my mind and my life, all due to dabbing. Do you, supervisors, understand what it means to dab high THC concentrates like wax, oil, shatter, or butter? If not, you must learn, because concentrates, edibles, and drinkables are now engineered to unprecedented THC potency as high as 90%. Research shows regular use with THC greater than just. 10% can result in psychosis and increased risk of violence, including suicide. As stewards of public health, it's your responsibility as you push a marijuana ordinance that no one asked for to impose potency caps to stop these dangerous trends and products. Current potency is unregulated, and that is unacceptable."
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is 2153. 2153, please press star six to unmute.
Good morning. This is Kelly McCormick. I'm trained in public health with a focus on tobacco, alcohol, and drug education. I would like to share my concern about expanding the commercial marijuana industry. You may have seen widely-reported data that an average of 29 people a day go to hospital emergency departments in San Diego County due to marijuana use, much higher now than in previous years. There is severe anxiety or psychotic symptoms caused by THC concentrates, hyperemesis syndrome with relentless and painful vomiting, and an increasing number of children who inadvertently ingest multiple servings of THC from a single marijuana cookie or candy improperly stored in the home. As with all businesses, the goal of this industry is to increase sales, to increase profits. Emergency responders and medical personnel are already stretched thin due to COVID. Why choose to increase the load, especially in areas of the county that lack easy access to a 24-hour medical facility? When the county enacted a ban on the sale of flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes, I was proud that you stood up to a predatory industry and stood up for public health. Why is vaping marijuana treated differently? THC has a much stronger effect than nicotine on both the user and the community. This defies logic. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 9887. 9887, please press star six to unmute.
Good morning. My name is Carol Green, and I'm here to speak to you today to remind you of a few things as you consider accurate health information, absolutely, consider a marijuana ordinance, and focus on suicide prevention in the month of September, and with your always-present mental health focus, I want to remind you of the following information for your consideration. A recent article in the Journal of American Medical Association Psychiatry, which is clearly an approved medical journal, had this article, "Development Over Time of Population Attributed Risk for Cannabis Use Disorder in Schizophrenia." Danish researchers have found a strong link between marijuana and schizophrenia. This is how they did it. Denmark has a national health study registry which enables researchers to study disease diagnosis of the entire population. They looked at the diagnosis of schizophrenia and cannabis use disorder between 1972 and 2016. They found that a proportion of cases of schizophrenia associated with cannabis use disorder had increased three to fourfold during the past two decades, which the researchers said was expected, given the previously described incidence in the use of potency of cannabis. They noted that their findings should have ramifications for legalization and control of the drug. You can read the full text in JAMA Psychiatry, July 21, 2021. I share this with you because the link between mental health disorder and marijuana is becoming more and more clear and more and more prevalent as THC levels go up and commercialization increases. We all watched the cute TK students from McMillan Elementary School this morning do the pledge of allegiance. My son was one, one of those cute students at McMillan. He went there, he played soccer, he sang in the choir, he won the school speech contest, and he had a bright future. While at San Diego State, his friends convinced him that he should...
I encourage all San Diegans to stand up against any mandate they feel in their heart is inherently wrong or unjust. I stand with the health of professionals and police and firefighters, last year heroes, now on the verge of being thrown in the garbage by mandates fueled by identity politics and virtue signaling. You are all serial heroes to me, and do not endorse the cowardly actions of our government towards you. We, the people, Nathan Fletcher, will not comply with one more inch of our freedoms being taken away. There are no strings on me.
Good evening. Good morning. My name is Albert B. Scholl III. I'm a 40-year-plus resident of California and a fearless German-American. Good to see you, public servants. I come bearing gifts for all of you, an everlasting and an empathetic plea. My words may be misinterpreted, but they come from a place of everlasting love, compassion, and respect for your fears and misunderstandings. Yet my concern for our children's future supersedes your lack of humility and thirst of control. I've pushed back since day one against the lockdowns and non-scientific mandates with music, art, countless protests, and events. I'm a sociologist, artist, and special needs art teacher. I'm the father of three one-children serving as a Navy medic. I'm a husband of a preschool teacher who's been on the ground teaching the entire time. I'm the son of a Top Gun Navy pilot that served on the Midway. I come from a family of warriors. I'm here today with the blood of Sophie and Hans Scholl running through my veins. They were executed for being part of a small percent of German people that had the courage to speak out against the Nazis. They were the right rose. They put out warnings of mass genocide, and World War II's anniversary is tomorrow. What resulted were the execution of Nazi soldiers, doctors, scientists, media propagandists, politicians, and the Nuremberg codes. I have experienced many vaccine injuries within my family and my circle of friends, work with the population of vaccine-injured childrens. This VASK, VASK and mask campaign is not a one-size-fits-all. My entire family is imploding based on our choice and risk assessment to not become part of the largest experiment to hit mankind, a never-ending fear-based reaction to include a lifelong coercive, threatening campaign for boosters to maintain one's first-class medical cynicismry. Children will not be your shields for this insane-based mass psychosis. I look to you today and sing your pseudoscience song louder and louder to drown out the screams of the citizens in the passing trains headed to the death camps.
Thank you, sir. Sir, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Bo Nielsen? We're waiting for Bo to come into the chamber. We'll go ahead and hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We'll be calling speakers by the last four digits of their phone number. You'll hear a notification that your call has been unmuted. You will then need to press star six to unmute your phone. Each caller will be asked to state their name for the audio record. You will have two minutes to address the board. I'll remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. And if you could please identify our first caller.
Our first caller is 1-822-1-822. Please press star six to unmute.
Good morning. My name is Peggy Walker. I'm here today as we observe National Suicide Awareness Month in September to share results from a new National Institute of Health survey of nearly 300,000 young adults. It shows the odds of people aged 18 to 35 thinking about suicide were 50% higher among those who used marijuana. The study said that mechanisms in the brain dysregulated by cannabis contribute to suicidal thoughts and violence, and stated that suicide is the leading cause of death among young adults and second-leading cause of death among 10 to 34. I know three families who lost college-age sons to marijuana-related suicides. Johnny, for one, began dabbing at age 14 at a high school party. Intelligent, funny, with a four-point GPA and college scholarship, he couldn't stop his use. Three days before he died by suicide at age 19, Johnny left a note for his mom saying, "You were right. You told me marijuana would hurt my brain. It's ruined my mind and my life, all due to dabbing." Do you supervisors understand what it means to dab high THC concentrates like wax, oil, shatter, or butter? If not, you must learn because concentrates, edibles, and drinkables are now engineered to unprecedented THC potency as high as 90%. Research shows regular use with THC greater than just 10% can result in psychosis and increased risk of violence, including suicide. As stewards of public health, it's your responsibility as you push a marijuana ordinance that no one asked for to impose potency caps to stop these dangerous trends and products. Current potency is unregulated, and that is unacceptable.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is 2153. 2153, please press star six to unmute.
Good morning. This is Kelly McCormick. I'm trained in public health with a focus on tobacco, alcohol, and drug education. I would like to share my concern about expanding the commercial marijuana industry. You may have seen widely-reported data that an average of 29 people a day go to hospital emergency departments in San Diego County due to marijuana use, much higher now than in previous years. There is severe anxiety or psychotic symptoms caused by THC concentrates, hyperemesis syndrome with relentless and painful vomiting, and an increasing number of children who inadvertently ingest multiple servings of THC from a single marijuana cookie or candy improperly stored in the home. As with all businesses, the goal of this industry is to increase sales, to increase profits. Emergency responders and medical personnel are already stretched thin due to COVID. Why choose to increase the load, especially in areas of the county that lack easy access to a 24-hour medical facility? When the county enacted a ban on the sale of flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes, I was proud that you stood up to a predatory industry and stood up for public health. Why is vaping marijuana treated differently? THC has a much stronger effect than nicotine on both the user and the community. This defies logic. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 9887. 9887, please press star six to unmute.
Good morning. My name is Carol Green, and I'm here to speak to you today to remind you of a few things as you consider accurate health information, absolutely, consider a marijuana ordinance, and focus on suicide prevention in the month of September, and with your always-present mental health focus, I want to remind you of the following information for your consideration. A recent article in the Journal of American Medical Association Psychiatry, which is clearly an approved medical journal, had this article, "Development Over Time of Population Attributed Risk for Cannabis Use Disorder in Schizophrenia." Danish researchers have found a strong link between marijuana and schizophrenia. This is how they did it. Denmark has a national health study registry, which enables researchers to study disease diagnosis of the entire population. They looked at the diagnosis of schizophrenia and cannabis use disorder between 1972 and 2016. They found that a proportion of cases of schizophrenia associated with cannabis use disorder had increased three to fourfold during the past two decades, which the researchers said was expected, given the previously described incidence in the use of potency of cannabis. They noted that their findings should have ramifications for legalization and control of the drug. You can read the full text in JAMA Psychiatry, July 21, 2021. I share this with you because the link between mental health disorder and marijuana is becoming more and more clear and more and more prevalent as THC levels go up and commercialization increases. We all watched the cute TK students from McMillan Elementary School this morning do the pledge of allegiance. My son was one of those cute students at McMillan. He went there, he played soccer, he sang in the choir, he won the school speech contest, and he had a bright future. While at San Diego State, his friends convinced him that he should try some marijuana, which led to psychosis induced and later his death. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Our next caller is 2352. 2352, please press star six to unmute.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm Craig Logan, District 5. Borrego Springs Planning Group, like many planning groups this summer, have been examining their list of road maintenance projects, water, and land use management plans. As you know, the environment of the Borrego Valley is its greatest resource. Well-maintained roads, clean air, available groundwater, clearer skies, defending wildlife and migratory species, protection of the Anza Borrego Desert State Park require vigilance and diligence by its residents. These are the planning group core values. We wonder if Supervisor Fletcher knows who we are and how we feel about our land. We are mystified at the plan to spend money to facilitate and promote marijuana businesses. County residents living in the unincorporated areas did not want, need, or ask for them. When county residents spoke at June's County Planning Commission, it was clear they felt this was a rushed, environmental, and economically flawed plan. County residents living in the unincorporated areas didn't ask for more than the five marijuana storefronts. They already are there. And we certainly think that expanding the number of marijuana storefronts and other marijuana businesses are an unwanted, unneeded, and unwise municipal code change. Our planning group works to protect our community's unique and fragile ecosystem and our small commercial downtown with community member-owned businesses. We have no desire to exploit marijuana storefronts and other marijuana business activities that could irreparably harm our community, character, and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 4592. 4592, please press star six to unmute. 4592, please press star six to unmute. All right, we'll come back. Our next speaker is 6444. 6444, please press star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Adam Fisher. Masks have been proven to significantly slow the spread of the coronavirus, but they by far work best when everyone wears them. The county has been recommending everyone wear a mask in public indoors. While that is in line with strong CDC and CDPH recommendations, it is clearly not working, as many people are indoors in public without a mask all the time, both vaccinated and unvaccinated. In fact, just recently, our local school board held their meeting indoors with no remote access option, and with most people there not wearing masks. What message does that send to people who may want to impugn in front of the school board to exercise their right to speak? That they must either give up that right to speak or else enter in an environment that may be unsafe? A way to solve this is to enact a uniform policy that requires everyone indoors in public to wear masks. The only way to ensure more adherence to this lifesaving measure is to make it a requirement for everyone as Los Angeles, the San Francisco Bay Area, and many other places have already done. In fact, San Diego's latest case rate, at 37 cases per 100,000 people per day, is 50% above Los Angeles's rate of 24 and almost double the Bay Area's rate of 20, in part likely because we do not have a universal mask requirement indoors. Regardless of the reason, the universal indoor mask requirement is even more justified in San Diego, given case rates, than it is in those other areas. I'm urging the board that, based on the data we have, it is time to take further steps in San Diego to keep our people, especially kids who cannot yet be vaccinated, safe. A universal indoor mask mandate is a critical first step in this regard. Furthermore, if the county really wants to slow the community's spread further and protect its most vulnerable residents, it should consider vaccine requirements for some indoor activities, as LA and San Francisco are doing. Finally, I want to point out that the county's own COVID website states the county health officer order will be modified when certain triggers have been met, and those triggers have been well-accepted. So it is time for action. Thank you.
Chair Fletcher, that concludes public, non-agenda public communication this morning. The remaining speakers that requested to speak on non-agenda public communication, we've heard at the conclusion of the board's items.
Thank you. We will now proceed. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes, statement of proceedings for the regular board meeting in San Diego Fire Protection District meeting on August 17, 2021. I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a motion by myself, seconded by Vice Chair Vargas, to approve the minutes. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
We'll now proceed with the formation of the consent calendar. I'll begin by asking the clerk if there's any items the public wishes to be pulled from today's agenda for individual presentations, discussion, and vote.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. The only items that are not polled by the public for discussion are items 17 and 18. All the remaining items on the Board of Supervisors' agenda have been polled by the public for discussion. I'll also note that item 20 are closed session matters that will be considered at the conclusion of the board's public session tomorrow, Wednesday, September 1, 2021. So your consent calendar includes items 17 and 18.
All right. Let me go to my colleagues and ask if you'd like to pull any of the remaining two items or all the other items, if you have comments on, we'll be taking them up individually. So we'll begin with Supervisor Anderson.
I'm happy to make that motion for what's been polled. I have no other changes, and I'm happy to amend it to whatever anybody else wants.
All right. Supervisor Lawson Reamer.
Wow, there's an opening.
Nothing. Supervisor Desmond?
I will boldly second the, prefer items 17 and 18 for approval.
All right. Vice Chair Vargas. All right. With that, we have a motion by Supervisor Anderson, seconded by Supervisor Desmond, to approve the consent calendar, which is essentially items 17 and 18. All other items on today's agenda, we will take up individually. I'll ask the clerk to confirm that, and then please vote.
That is correct. Thank you, Chair Fletcher. Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
All right. We'll take the items on the agenda in sequential order, beginning with Agenda Item 1, Notice Public Carrying, Initiation of Dissolution of County Service Area Number 69. It's an item brought forward by Supervisor Anderson. I'll begin, ask Supervisor Anderson if you have any introductory comments you would like to make, and then we'll hear from public speakers on the board.
We met with everybody involved, and everyone's in agreement on doing this, and I urge and I vote. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Supervisor Anderson, seconded by Supervisor Desmond, to approve the recommendations in Agenda Item 1. Let me ask the clerk to call forward the public speakers at this time.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have one request to speak in opposition to this item. I'd like to invite forward Audra Morgan. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hello again, Audra Morgan. So we've come to you before with AB 389, which is using private ambulance services, which this is doing, using future property taxes of 3.492 million, whatever, 3.4 million. And you're creating a need for these ambulance services with what you're doing with COVID-19 and trying to tackle it. Using AB 262, you can do all of these things, and you're supposed to be our servants. Yeah, Nora. I don't know if that's confusing to you guys, probably because you don't really know what you're doing, but that's okay. We do, and we know what you should be doing that you're not. Anyway, the fact that you are using these private ambulance services to, in areas where you're claiming that there's like more of a spread of COVID or people need more help getting vaccinated, the problem is, is that you're using all this money in ways that the people, I mean, I know you're saying that people want this, but these are ambulance services for advanced life support. So what's the need for that unless it's you're going to be using people who have been injured by COVID or the vaccines that are killing people that you're not telling people about? But yeah, thanks.
Chair Fletcher, that concludes public comment on this item.
All right. Thank you. Let me go to my colleagues, see if there's any comments or questions on this item. Seeing none, we have a motion by Supervisor Anderson, seconded by Supervisor Desmond, to approve the recommendations in Agenda Item 1. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
All right. We're going to go to Agenda Item Number 2, San Diego County Fire, Approval of Actions Related to America Rescue Plan Act Funds Allocation for Investment in Local Independent Fire Districts. Let me ask county staff if they have any comments they would like to make. If not, we will just go to our public speakers on this item.
Chair Fletcher and members of the board, item 2 is in response to the board action on June 8 to set aside $4 million in ARPA funds for unincorporated fire protection districts. The recommended action transfers the appropriation to County Fire for the purposes of distributing the funds to fire districts and approves the methodology for dividing up the funds based on the population of each of the independent fire districts. Outreach was done earlier this month to the Fire Districts Association, and a letter of support for the allocation methodology was sent to County Fire on August 9. Fire district expenses must be related to COVID, and they can include things like overtime to cover shifts of firefighters if they're quarantined, health expenses for employees with COVID, testing and vaccination, PPE, personal protective equipment, and other equipment related to COVID, as well as ventilation and other improvements at fire stations to better safeguard their staff. Fire districts will have until June of 2024 to draw down on their allocation, and if a district has unused funds, a reallocation can occur to the other districts. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. In June, this board voted on our framework for distribution of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and included in that effort was $4 million of infrastructure funding set aside to help our local independent fire districts. We know that the dangers of wildfires are top of mind for so many San Diegans: drought, climate change, high winds, increase in lightning strikes, all conditions that create the historic fire dangers that our region faces today. And time and again, our fire service has stepped up, and we are grateful and appreciate the effort and the work, and this is an action I believe we can take to better help support our local independent fire districts. A special thank you to the firefighters in particular who stepped up during COVID. Our firefighters were essential, particularly in the unincorporated areas, particularly in helping with our vaccination efforts as they became vaccinators and were able to staff our centers and help. So this funding, I think, is an appropriate use of federal funds to help our region, help our region as we recover, respond, and prepare for what's ahead. So I'm pleased to support this item. I look forward to seeing the initiatives and the ongoing efforts, and I'm happy to put a motion on the table to approve the recommendations in Agenda Item 2.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Let's hear from, real quick, from our public speakers, and then we'll come back to Supervisors Anderson, or Desmond, Anderson, and Vargas.
Thank you, Supervisor Fletcher. We have one request to speak in opposition to this item. I'd like to invite forward Audra Morgan. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
Audra Morgan, so you're funneling money from fire into FEMA, but what you're also doing is just connecting fire with COVID. And that's kind of ridiculous that you're even using firefighters now they're vaccinators. So, I mean, how is that? I mean, it's like you can put funds in there from the COVID funds, you can take from the $653.5 million and put it into the fires, but what you do is you start fires, not you personally, but the powers that be do, who you're all attached to. And then it creates a need to be like, oh, let's evacuate them. But you can't come in here unless you're vaccinated. So we're going to have to vaccinate you if you want to find shelter from the fire. So what, how does that work out? I mean, how do you, like, make these people vaccinators? Like, how is, I mean, isn't that against what they should be doing? I mean, if there's fires, shouldn't they be concentrating on that, not becoming medical personnel? That then you can put this money into where they are? It's like, you're constantly, you guys and money is just, I mean, I wish I could just be there where all that money is at, and, you know? That'd be nice, because it's the people's money that you just continue to spend. But, yeah, you're just, you're creating needs for these things, and the fact that you're using fire for this, and then actually, so you're like, let's use you for the COVID pandemic, but like, if you don't get vaccinated, you're going to be fired. So is that like a coercive way to be like, you better do our bidding or you're gone? Because how about you guys do our bidding or you're fucking gone?
Next, I'd like to invite forward Eli Comai. Eli Comai, you'll have two minutes to address the board. Eli Comai? Chair Fletcher, not seeing any movement in the chamber. That concludes...
Let me go to, let me go to my colleagues, and then if he joins us, we will, we will certainly let him speak. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. When Supervisor Vargas and I, we hosted a Prevent Drowning Media Event here a couple of months ago. Several of the local fire chiefs who attended, and they represented the different fire districts throughout the county, they asked for more assistance and more dollars to pay for some of the COVID costs and expenses that they had incurred. So I was glad this request was part of the ARPA funding to assist in these special districts, the special fire districts to be made whole from their, for their expenses during the COVID-19 pandemic. But I want to thank our fire, our county's fire staff for developing this fund allocation, moving this forward. I will point out, though, that it was District 2 that got the most money, Nora, that we, that we asked for. I know, I know, but District 2 got the biggest chunk, so 1.1 million. But it was done by population, so all's fair. But I appreciate the effort in helping out the fire districts in the unincorporated area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. We'll go to Supervisor Anderson.
First off, thank you, Supervisor Desmond, for pointing out that we got the most money. But actually, that money protects all of us. It's not just my district. Fires don't know boundaries, and we saw in 2003 in the Cedar Fire that it damn near burned down to the waterfront. So I just want to thank my colleagues for participating in this. Alpine, Ramona, Lakeside, and San Miguel do an outstanding job, and I'm happy that we're able to help them with their firefighting. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Anderson. We'll go to Vice Chair Vargas.
There you go. I just want to say thank you. This has been a record-hard summer and throughout the fire season, so I wanted to thank all of our firefighters for everything they do on our behalf, and particularly during COVID. In my district, in hard-to-reach communities, all of you were just stellar in making sure that our communities were able to get vaccinated, especially our senior citizens. So I want to thank you for that. And so I also want to thank, commend County Fire for taking a role in assisting all of the whole region as a whole. And so I'm really proud to be supporting this, this ARPA funding, and I do want to say that I'm really glad that we do have funding for Lower Sweetwater and Benita in District 1, although it's not as much as District 2, it's still important. And I do want to say that this is only the beginning. You know, we'll be making sure that we do the cleanup for the brush as well in October and do a lot more work around it, but thank you for all your great work. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vargas. So we have a motion by myself, a second by Supervisor Anderson. Let's make a final call for our public speaker on this item.
Final call for Eli Comai.
All right. Not seeing Eli. Motion and a second to approve the recommendations in Agenda Item 2. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
We're not going to go to Agenda Item 3, Reports of the Board on Public Safety Power Shutoffs Addressing Gaps in Improving Coordination. Obviously, a timely issue and goes into the conversation we just had surrounding fire. I'm going to turn it over to county staff for a presentation, and then we'll hear from our public speakers on the board.
Good morning again, Chair Fletcher and members of the board. On March 2 of this year, your board directed the chief administrative officer to consult with stakeholders and produce a report and recommendations to increase regional resiliency for public safety power shutdown events. As a result, the Office of Emergency Services formed a regional resiliency working group with members from a diverse group of public, private, and nonprofit partnering agencies. The group discussed gaps and identified opportunities to further improve mitigation strategies and operational area coordination, all aimed at lessening the impacts for residents of planned power shutdowns during extreme weather events. The Office of Emergency Services also requested public input, conducted a survey, and hosted a public forum to gain feedback. The collection of input from the public will be ongoing through a survey that's posted on the Office of Emergency Services website. With me today is Director of the Office of Emergency Services, Jeff Tony, who will provide a more in-depth overview of the report addressing public safety power shutdown mitigation opportunities. Jeff?
Thank you very much, Holly. According to the California Public Utility
According to the California Public Utilities Commission, historically, electric utility infrastructure has been responsible for less than 10% of reported wildfires, yet compromised roughly half of the most destructive fires in California history. The 2007 firestorms were devastating to San Diego County. Much of the damage was ultimately attributed to electric utility infrastructure. In 2012, the CPUC adopted public safety power shut off rules and requirements for reasonableness, notification, mitigation, and reporting. In October 2013, SDG&E first utilized PSPS as a wildfire risk mitigation measure, and in recent years, other utilities began implementing PSPS during extreme weather events. In 2019, Governor Newsom launched the Local Government PSPS Resiliency Program and provided funding to local governments to help mitigate the impacts of PSPS in local communities. In both 2019 and 2020, the County of San Diego received approximately $1.8 million and has allocated funding for mitigation projects throughout the county. Our Office of Emergency Services analyzed the last two years of PSPS events and used GIS to identify the specific locations impacted. In 2019, the National Weather Service recorded four red flag events and the areas on the map shaded in pink were impacted. In 2020, there were seven red flag events affecting a larger geographical area and additional communities were impacted. This map shows all the investments the county has made with the state grant funding. Notable investments include backup generators at six county fire stations, backup generators at the Descanso and Potrero libraries, generator pad and transfer switch at the sheriff's headquarters building, battery backup replacement for 54 county traffic signals, and generator design costs for the public health laboratory. OES works with SDG&E and other partners before, during, and after PSPS events. OES formed the PSPS Regional Resiliency Working Group that consisted of subject matter experts from numerous agencies and community partners. As we do in emergency response, we took a whole community approach, bringing in a diverse set of stakeholders with unique perspectives and experience with PSPS. Some of the County of San Diego departments included the Department of Public Works, the Sheriff's Department, San Diego County Fire Protection District, libraries, and public health. Some other local tribal and state partners included CalOES, Caltrans, the Highway Patrol, Camp Pendleton, the Southern California Tribal Chairman's Association, and the cities of Escondido and Poway. Other partners included SDG&E, of course, 211, Red Cross, the National Weather Service, the Farm Workers Coalition, the County Office of Education, County Water Authority, the San Diego Regional Center, AT&amp;T, and other voluntary organizations. The working group also helped craft a public survey that was posted on the OES website and received over 2,300 responses. We will continue to solicit public input and host the survey in five different languages on the OES website. Here are a few highlights. The survey included questions related to PSPS notifications, personal preparedness, and also included open-ended questions where respondents could share their experiences during PSPS event. Common issues included food spoilage and lack of clarity on the SDG&E claims process, lack of lighting and air conditioning, the inability to charge electric vehicles, the inability to work remotely, loss of power to well pumps, insufficient battery backup to power durable medical equipment, solar panel limitations with no battery backup installed, and inadequate notification at the end of the power outage. The working group addressed some of the, some of these gaps in the recommendations and identified actions including outreach and education partnerships with SDG&E promoting resources available for power outages and personal disaster preparedness, and analysis of forecasted areas that could experience PSPS 72 hours before the predicted wind event, continued integration with SDG&E and 211 during PSPS events and emergency operations center activations to address unmet needs in affected communities, and leverage Alert San Diego as an additional notification tool. In more detail, the working group analyzed all results and through a series of meetings and facilitated discussions produced the following recommendations. When it comes to policy, encourage residents to pursue available energy rebate programs for generators or other renewable power options. Review the plan check and permit process for utility undergrounding for opportunities to improve. A lot of work can be done through coordination and outreach. Work to educate the public about generator usage and regulation flexibilities during PSPS events and track any legislative changes to air pollution regulations. Engage trained local volunteer organizations such as community emergency response teams, our CERT teams, or the Sheriff's You Are Not Alone program to assist with welfare checks for residents with access and functional needs or to assist at a community resource center. Integrate SDG&E customer contact information into Alert San Diego to expand outreach, notification, and alert and warning capabilities. Identify and target outreach programs and events to underserved communities in high fire threat areas. Promote 211 during PSPS events for public information and SDG&E currently has an existing contract in place. For equipment, research options to strengthen and maintain VHF radio coverage for first responders throughout the county, and also research opportunities to install backup power alternatives for critical infrastructure and key county facilities. Finally, PSPS events are not categorized as events that constitute a statewide emergency. Therefore, any local response costs associated with PSPS events are not eligible for reimbursement under the California Disaster Assistance Act. We would advocate for a mechanism to provide reimbursement to local governments as a result of PSPS. Most of the recommendations can be pursued through existing staff and resources. However, additional county or regional funding and resources would be required to pursue the equipment recommendations. OES will continue to search for grant and funding opportunities. Options include additional state grants, FEMA hazard mitigation and building resilient infrastructure and communities grant program, the American Rescue Plan Act, or private donations. I will now turn the presentation back over to Holly.
Thank you, Jeff. The county recognizes that long-term and frequent power outages are a challenge for many residents and that along with extreme weather conditions, they're not going away anytime soon. The Office of Emergency Services is committed to continuing the work of exploring ways to improve our response, increase regional collaboration, and improve our region's resilience to power shutdowns. We encourage members of the public to visit readysandiego.org for disaster readiness information and to provide feedback through a quick survey on proactive power outages. Chair Fletcher, this, and members of the board, this concludes our presentation and is subject to your questions. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Now, let's go to our public speakers on this item and then we'll come back to Supervisor Desmond, followed by Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you Chair Fletcher. We have three requests to speak in person on this item. One in favor, two in opposition, like to invite forward all three speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and line up under the mural. Vanessa Garcia, Audra Morgan, and John Moore. You'll have two minutes to address the board and we'll ask you to please state your name for the audio record.
Good morning, Chair Fletcher, Board of Supervisors, and staff. My name is Vanessa Garcia, Senior Public Affairs Manager for SDG&E, and with me today is our Emergency Operations Center Manager Mona Freels. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. We are proud of our wildfire efforts at SDG&E to help prevent any significant SDG&E-caused wildfires since 2007. However, we recognize we cannot rest on our laurels and we insist on continued improvement in this area for that we are grateful for this report from staff. SDG&E has utilized public safety power shut offs as a last resort since 2013. And since this time, we've continually improved and refined our approach to limit the impacts to our most endangered communities. This has been accomplished with both infrastructure improvements, as well as expansive community outreach, customer engagement, and valuable partnerships with public safety organizations such as the county, local governments, and community groups. And we understand the burden and impacts that public safety power shut offs have on our customers and we want to continue to deploy solutions that help reduce the frequency and duration of outages such as additional weather stations, infrastructure hardening, strategic undergrounding, building community microgrids, and other operational measures. Many of these improvements have been informed and driven by the feedback of elected officials, community leaders, members of the public and staff. We want to say SDG&E is also piloting some cutting-edge mobile power station to support the needs of customers impacted by public safety power shut offs. These energy solutions will include charging ports for clean energy vehicles and allow customers to remain with power during these events. Medical baseline customers also, who have experienced an outage, may be receiving portable generators as well as other generator rebates. We're continuing to expand on our partnership with 211, the American Red Cross Salvation Army, and more than 200 community-based organizations. A lot of these notifications are done in 21 prevalent languages, including American Sign Language. Nothing is more important than the continued safety and well-being of the communities we serve. We are working tirelessly to integrate innovative technologies to significantly decrease PSPS events.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Audra Morgan. So these are words I hear that I don't understand that has to do with public safety power shut off. FEMA, hazard mitigation, private donations, public health laboratory, Red Cross, Salvation Army, personal disaster preparedness, $1.8 million. I mean, the fires in Paradise weren't even started by PG&E. So the things that we're doing, I just feel like we're always including, like, other entities that don't even have to do with that. And you're, yeah, this is, I don't even know what else to say. I'm good.
My name is John Moore. I'm a resident of the city of San Diego. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board. Most of the fires that are started, the forest fires, are started by migrants and firebugs. That's what's causing this rush of fires. It always happens this time of year. It is like clockwork. As soon as we hear that a hot temperature is going to arrive the next day, we get a lot of these incidents. So they're being cued by, now, this might sound strange, but if you watch it over several years, you'll notice this pattern. In Oregon and Washington, last year, they arrested all kinds of firebugs that were deliberately starting fires with delayed ignition devices and just simpler devices than that. That was the main cause. These people were arrested for arson. They weren't suspected of arson. They were caught and arrested and I assume they'd been tried. So it's, but here in California, we don't seem to catch them. So we must have them here if they've got them up there. The power company, Pacific Gas and Electric, was found innocent in the first trial, so they could have continued, but they were bankrupt by all of the lawsuits from the damage to paradise, including the people that died, which is unfortunate. But was that the part of, the fault of SDG&E? And that isn't clear. And now, right now, we're going to be, the people under PG&E are going to be subject to power outages. That was, we knew that was going to be coming once a public entity took over the private enterprise. And that could happen in San Diego, too. And we hope it doesn't, but I think it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Chair Fletcher, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. We'll go to Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, I would like to thank Jeff and Stephen Ray and the rest of the Operations Emergency Services team for their work on this report back. You pulled together a fantastic team and working group that you listed off in the presentation. However, you know, there was an initial survey that was conducted that revealed a great deal about what the public thought about the power safety shut offs. 73% they didn't have, felt they didn't have sufficient resources to maintain safety of life, property, and the environment during a public safety power shutdown event, primarily due to, you know, couldn't get the well water out of the ground if the electricity was shut off. And then also, 72% they were not, said they were not sufficiently notified when the event ended. You know, when did it, when is it over? When can I go back and check on my ice cream or whatever at the, or if their house is still there? But this clearly shows that we still have some more work to do. And I know SDG&E has been a leader in the state. They've had, they've had the, made those power safety shut offs work even better to protect us from dangers of wildfire. I know they're able to put it, put it by zones and by certain areas instead of just, you know, wiping out an entire or shutting off an entire area. They're able to pinpoint certain communities for that. The working group identified the need to work with 211 and the other, and the CERT people to check on those that are most vulnerable during a fire or a power shutdown. But I like the work also that was accomplished by using the local government power safety resiliency program for the purchase of generators, fire sta, at the fire station's library and public health labs, and replacing backup batteries for 54 traffic signals at the major intersections in the unincorporated area. However, I think there's more work that we can do to coordinate traffic during a power safety shutdown. I've heard similar stories from public safety officials from different parts of the county. A fire chief came up to me and said, you know, during a fire a few years ago, he witnessed everything from semi-trucks to horse trailers, driving through high-speed intersections of old 76 and Old Highway 395 without stopping and just hauling, you know, hauling right through those interchanges. The traffic lights are out and they're narrowing, missing other vehicles. He actually stopped his vehicle at that intersection, turned on the, on the lights, and was advised by the CHP and Caltrans that they really had no plans to do anything to go out there and assist in that effort. So initially, when I brought this, when this was brought forward, I was very concerned about the intersections themselves, particularly at night. And I realize it's, you know, it's almost impossible to have someone at every intersection directing traffic, you know, law enforcement or anybody else during a power outage situation. But it can get significant, particularly at night. So I'd like to make an additional recommendation of, after receiving this staff report, in addition to accepting the staff report. And just a little background, and this just came from staff, thank you very much. We have over 202 traffic lights in the unincorporated area, or 202 exactly, I guess, traffic lights in the unincorporated area, and they have battery backups that last for six to eight hours. That's it. And during the first, you gave me information, the first four hours, they function normally and then the last four hours, if they last that long, they go to just, I guess, red or blinking red or something like that, and then they're out. So if a power outage happens, maybe hopefully before a fire, a couple hours before, these intersections have already used up a third or quarter of their, of their life. So what I'd like to ask is to direct the CAO to work with county staff internally and then also with outside agencies like Caltrans and others, Highway Patrol, to hopefully oversee the agency responsible for placing those traffic control devices at major intersections, particularly along evacuation routes, along evacuation routes and corridors, and make sure that the batteries and generators backup at those intersections maintain safety operations at night that hopefully lasts for days, not just hours. You know, if we can get them so they operate at night, that would be wonderful if they're not, so they're not on all day long. But at nighttime, you know, I heard horror stories from people when they do an evac, when they evacuate, and they're used to coming up to an intersection and the lights are on and they're pitch black, it's dark. So I really would like to see more effort put into what we can do to maintain the out power at those, particularly the evacuation corridor corridor, I'm sorry, corridor signals to maintain power for days during nighttime operation. So I'd add that as a motion to accept the report and then ask for more work on that effort.
Second. Got it. So we've got a motion by Supervisor Desmond, seconded by Supervisor Anderson to adopt the recommendations in number three, adding a recommendation directing the chief administrative officer and county staff to work with our external partners to find, to explore ways to operate longer traffic signals with a particular focus along evacuation routes.
Corridors, yeah, to keep those operating.
Okay.
Yes.
Good. Supervisor Desmond, or Anderson, I mean.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. I, I had a quick question for staff. I want to make sure I have this correctly, but SDG&E has a Rule 20D program that provides for undergrounding equipment in fire-threat zoned areas. And I believe that we have about $8 million in a credit with them on that. Can we confirm that or get a ballpark on, on both those items? I want to make sure that, that we do have that money and that that program allows for undergrounding.
Through the chair, Supervisor Anderson, I believe it is about $8 million. We can confirm that with you through staff?
Okay, great. With that, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to my good friend Supervisor Desmond's motion that we would, that we would encourage staff to look to implement this money as quickly as possible with the idea that we are having power shut offs because the power lines are susceptible to wind damage. So where it makes most sense, where we have the So where it makes most sense, where we have the most incidence of wind influence, that perhaps we underground those. Secondly, I'd like to also have the county staff look at opportunities to seek additional PUC Rule 20 program money for future high threat, for high-risk threats. And then finally, I'd like to, we received 1.2 million in 2019 from the state's Community Power Resilience Allocation Program, and that was the funding level prior to pre-COVID. I'd like to have staff pursue that to try to increase us back to those funding levels. So there's three elements to this. I talked awfully fast, but you're a fast writer.
I got it. You got, you got three friendly amendments, so let's, let's go through these. We have the one from Supervisor Desmond. Second one would be encouraging staff to maximize investment in undergrounding funds in areas that are most impacted by wind events. The second would be to work to secure additional PUC Rule 20 funding for San Diego County. And the fourth would be to continue to pursue Community Power Resilience Program funding.
State Community Power Resilience Allocation Program, to resume the funding levels that we were once at.
Got it.
Or if they can improve it, all the better, but I don't want to set the bar too high.
Got it. Perfect. Okay, so we have those, those changes. So we now have a motion with those four additions to it. Let's go to Vice Chair Vargas.
No, no, I'm still thinking. I'm good, okay. I'm good.
You're good.
All right, thank you.
Vice Chair Vargas.
Thank you, colleagues. So I just wanted to make sure, while reading the recommendations, specifically under the piece of the generator regulations, right? I know that there's a lot of work being done with APCD, I happen to care, the Air Pollution Control District, so I know that the recommendation is to collaborate with partners to educate the public about generator use, regulation, and regulations of flexibilities during these events, and track legislation, but I just want to make sure that staff will be monitoring that because I think it's really critical because it defeats the purpose if people are having the generators. So, Vanessa, thank you for being here. And so I just want to make sure that staff is monitoring that and we're thinking about what does that look like and the impact that that has. And then the other piece was around outreach in underserved communities. It says identify and target outreach programs at events to understand communities and high fire threats and using different equity diversity and inclusion methods. I just want to make sure that that is very clear about not just using, you know, regular social media, but really thinking about reaching out to communities, using promotora programs, using other models. I know that when I received in my bill that my home is one of the ones that is, you know, I live in District One, obviously, and to La Vista, and so it's, it's a targeted area. And I'm like, I'm not really sure what this means. And so just more clarification about what that means to folks and in language so that people have a better understanding and don't just get nervous, especially right now when, particularly in, in areas like Barrio Logan, where a lot of our kids have asthma and/or use a lot of the health tools to be able to be kept alive, just to make sure that there, there's some sort of way to working with them and, and they're excluded from some of these as well. So it would be helpful if we could just make sure that that's made monitored. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, seconded by Supervisor Anderson. Not seeing any additional board members who want to speak, please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
We're now going to go to Agenda Item Four, Sheriff's Department Acceptance of Donation from the San Diego Honorary Deputy Sheriff's Association. Why don't we just jump to our public speaker on this item?
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have one request to speak in opposition to this item. I'd like to invite forward Audra Morgan. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
Audra Morgan, so you're going to spend $18,000 on the purchase of AK-9 and bike racks that are $8,318 that you're going to be using to use as emerg, to assist emergency services to protect the public during events. You know, when you're considering people a public health threat because they're not vaccinated and you're calling us terrorists, are you going to use these dogs against the people to ensure that they get vaccinated? You know, just, you guys waste money and like spend it on just crazy things. I mean, why would you spend $18,000 on a dog?
One dog?
One dog? And then you want like almost $60,000 for four sheriff units to get dogs? And then it's just going to cost more money to keep the dogs, get training and all of that stuff? I mean, it's just, I don't know, it's ridiculous.
That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Fletcher.
Thank you, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve, and I want to say a thank you to those who are donating these funds to the Sheriff's Department to be able to provide these important services. There a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by myself, seconded by Vice Chair Vargas. Not seeing any request to speak, please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor. I just, I apologize for being late. I just want to, you know, clear out for our speaker in the audience, this was money that was donated by the San, by the San Diego Honorary Deputy Sher, it was donated by them for this purpose. So I don't know how much a highly trained dog costs, but this was, this was donated, they, they wanted it for this purpose, and we're, we're enacting that and we're carrying it out. So I appreciate, I just want to give that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. All right, we are going to go to Agenda Item Five, receive a report on accomplishments of the $50 million Innovative Housing Trust Fund. To begin this, we will get a presentation from staff, and we'll go to our public speakers, and we'll come back to the board. So I will turn it over to, to staff for their presentation.
Good morning, Chair Fletcher, members of the board. In 2017, the Board of Supervisors established Innovative Housing Trust Fund, invested $25 million for the creation of affordable housing. In 2019, the Board increased the investment, adding $25 million for affordable housing efforts region-wide to create healthy, safe, and thriving communities. That action focused on increasing the inventory of county-funded and restricted affordable housing by 30%. We are pleased to provide an update on the success of the Innovative Housing Trust Fund. And here today with me to present is David Estrada, Director for Housing, Community Development Services, and Kelly Sammons, our Chief Agency Operations. David?
Good morning. I'd like to begin with a brief summary of the Innovative Housing Trust Fund, also known as the IHTF. Through the combined four trust fund notices of funding availability, $50 million was invested in affordable housing countywide. In alignment with the county's Liv Well San Diego vision, the Innovative Housing Trust Fund has successfully created or preserved 1,397 permanent affordable housing units with 20 developments in 15 communities throughout San Diego County. Affordable units will provide housing for low-income families, seniors, veterans, developmentally disabled, homeless, and homeless with serious mental illness. These developments will serve an estimated 18,000 San Diego residents with permanent affordable units through a 99-year affordability period. Additionally, the trust leveraged about $567 million in federal, state, and other local The regional impact of the trust fund can be seen throughout the county with developments completed, under construction, and upcoming from San Isidro in the south, Alpine to the east, and Escondido in the north. Today, we will highlight the progress of trust fund developments and the remarkable work being done to provide quality, safe, and affordable housing for San Diego residents. To start, we will review trust fund developments securing financing. There are currently five awarded developments in their final stage of securing financing, two of which just closed escrow this month. Featured here are Valley Senior Village, a 50-unit development estimated to start construction in January 2022, and Cedar Ketner, estimated to start construction in March 2022. That will include 64 affordable housing units. Both new construction developments will serve low-income seniors with incomes ranging from 30% to 60% area median income. National Core, the developers of Valley Senior Village share the following. Thanks to the significant role of the Innovative Housing Trust Fund, Valley Senior Village was able to go from concept to groundbreaking in an unprecedented short timeframe of less than two years. Shadow Hill will renovate 82 existing affordable housing units, and Delora will bring an additional 100 permanent affordable housing apartment homes to the county with construction starting in September 2021. These developments will increase affordable housing in Santee and San Marcos, providing apartment homes to low-income families and persons with developmental disabilities. City Heights Place, formerly known as Union Back Apartments, will be located in the City Heights neighborhood of San Diego, near retail and many amenities within a transit priority area. The development will add 60 affordable units to the county, serving low-income individuals and families. Through a collaborative effort and shared commitment, we are happy to announce the City Heights Place development just celebrated their close of escrow this month with construction starting in September and are one step closer in creating apartment homes for San Diego Next, we would like to highlight the tremendous work being done countywide, not only to increase affordable apartment homes, but also provide economic growth to the region. Featured here is Mid-City Apartments located in City Heights, estimated to be completed in August 2022. The following slides highlight the trust fund's developments that are currently under There are 10 developments currently under construction. These developments will create 673 affordable housing units throughout the county. Developments include Villa Serena in San Marcos, Ulrich Street in Linda Vista, Paseo Artist Village in Vista, Jamboree Permanent Supportive Housing in San Isidro, Mid-City Apartments in City Heights, Apollo in Poway, Alpine Family Apartments in Alpine, Valencia Point in San Diego, El Cajon Senior Veteran Apartments in El Cajon, and Casa Anita in Chila Vista. Construction completion dates range from December 2021 through January 2024. Featured here are construction progress photos from Jamboree Permanent Supportive Housing and Ulrich Street Apartments. On this slide are construction progress photos for Valencia Point, Alpine Family Apartments, the first county-funded affordable housing development in the community of Alpine, and Paseo Artist Village. These photographs also represent the positive employment impact that the Innovative Housing Trust Fund has helped generate. The National Association of Home Builders estimates that for each 100 units of affordable housing developed, 100 to 160 construction jobs are created in the first year, and 30 to 32 construction jobs are created in ongoing years of operation. Thanks to your commitment, individuals and families across the county will benefit from housing stability and the economic growth brought to the region. Lastly, I would like to celebrate the IHTF-funded projects that have completed all stages of development and are now places San Diegans can call home. I would like to introduce Kelly Sammons, Chief of Agency Operations, to walk us through the completion of, the completed developments, beginning with Paseo La Paz, featured on the next slide. Kelly?
Good morning, Chair Fletcher, members of the board. Paseo La Paz has created 139 new one, two, and three-bedroom affordable housing units for families earning between 50 and 60% of the area median income. The trust fund enabled Paseo La Paz to be the first new construction of affordable units in San Isidro in nearly 10 years. Additionally, the trust fund created an opportunity to incorporate solar features within this transit-oriented development located just a quarter mile away from the trolley line. Partnered with Casa Familiar, a rich menu of services, including skilled, skills-building classes, art and fitness programs, as well as cultural festivities, help to cultivate a positive environment where residents can grow and thrive. Paseo La Paz was completed in January of 2020 and is 100% occupied. Reflected on this slide is the community play area and living spaces. Next, we have Villa de Vida. This development is a 54-unit apartment community located in the city of Alpine. Villa de Vida completed construction in May of 2021 and is dedicated to supporting residents with developmental disabilities, empowering residents to live independently, access onsite services, and engage with their community in a positive way. Community features and amenities at Villa de Vida include an outdoor barbecue area, exercise room, laundry rooms on each floor, a staffed kitchen, community dining room, and a plaza overlooking Poway Creek with access to numerous walking trails. Pacifica at Playa del Sol has created 42 new one, two, and three-bedroom affordable housing units in the Ojai Mesa community for families earning between 50 and 60% of the area median income. The project includes 12 apartments set aside for residents with developmental disabilities, integrated into a vibrant, desirable master-planned community. Playa del Sol was completed in August of 2019 and is currently 100% occupied. Next, we have Vista del Puente, just located in southeast San Diego and provides 52 units, of which 26 are for homeless veterans and 12 are for homeless families. Funding from the trust fund contributed to the installation of solar panels that were operational as of July of 2021. The trust fund played a significant role in making this development possible. Without these funds, the development would not have been competitive in current financing climate, and resident services would likely have not been possible. Onsite support services provided by townspeople are available to all residents and include case management for permanent supportive housing units, transportation assistance, after-school tutoring, and community events. Residents can also participate in workshops for digital literacy, conflict intervention, and mediation. Additionally, residents receive move-in assistance and are provided with basic resources and home goods. Vista del Puente provides the setting and housing stability needed for residents to achieve their goals. Lastly, we'd like to recognize The Grove, a new community of affordable homes which completed construction in October of 2020. It is designed for active seniors aged 62 years and older in the revitalized civic core of Vista. 81 one- and two-bedroom units are home to 102 residents. 100% of the units will remain affordable for the development's lifespan. The design incorporates green space and outdoor gathering areas scattered throughout, including a common garden and barbecue area. The Grove is located close to public transit, shopping, and other community resources like a public library and senior center. While living at The Grove, residents can take advantage of onsite programs, including exercise classes, community gatherings, meal distributions, and a computer lab. The Grove also provides our growing senior population the amenities needed to enhance their quality of life and help them to remain engaged, healthy, and independent. As stated by a Wakeland Housing Team member, the Innovative Housing Trust Fund was a critical part of the overall financing structure for The Grove. These important local funds allowed the project to secure an allocation of competitive tax credits from the state of California. The county also provided project-based Section A vouchers that allowed The Grove to meet the affordable housing needs of extremely low-income residents. We would like to take a moment to hear some testimonies from The Grove residents reflecting just a glimpse of the impact the Innovative Housing Trust Fund has helped to create in the county of San Diego.
Every day, we actually start to feel like, wow, we really can feel safe and secure and look forward to a good future.
We can afford this little nest, no, no matter what, on our social security. It's, it's a wonderful community. Yeah. We're constantly stopping and talking with people in the halls. We're just so relieved that we get to stay in San Diego. We get to stay in Vista, which has been our community for eight years, to keep all of our, our support group, all our friends.
Pero cuando me pegó el cáncer, no tenía yo donde vivir. Nadie me ayudaba, vaya con algo, que pagara yo más o menos un razonable, ¿no? Yo, mi parte sí, bueno, porque me tocó hasta el tercer piso, que está muy alto. Pero no es ningún problema, porque tiene este elevadores, entonces como si estuviera mi trabajo también. Y luego, como le digo, si un día se nos compone el carro, pues los autobuses pasan aquí. Y este, y no está lejos también la terminal del trolley.
Ahora sí tengo un hogar. De veras, porque ya lo necesitábamos. Así como mi esposo, ya tiene como 72 años y no encontrábamos la facilidad donde poder encontrar... y no encontrábamos la facilidad donde poder encontrar o donde poder vivir.
San Diego residents' stories like those here at The Grove are just a sample of the many, many lives impacted by the housing created regionally with the investment from the Innovative Housing Trust Fund. We thank your board, Board of Supervisors, for their ongoing commitment in bringing innovative solutions to the county, including the $25 million in the American Rescue Plan Act funding allocated to affordable housing activities. We'd also like to recognize the dedication of our developers throughout our county, our many community partners and stakeholders, and our great county team, led by David Estrada, our County Housing Development Services, to help make this work possible. The trust fund is the first of its kind, being the first locally-funded administrative program to offer funding for affordable housing throughout the entire San Diego region. And we're very proud of our accomplishments to date, but we still have much, much more work to do. This concludes our presentation. We're available for any questions.
Thank you. I want to thank the staff for the presentation and work. Obviously, as a region, we know we have a lot more work to do in tackling the challenges of affordable housing. And we're obviously going to be spending a fair amount of time today with several items as it relates to housing as a board to really discuss and decide and plot where we want to go. But I appreciate all the work that's been done and am proud of, in particular, the affordable housing projects in D4. With that, let's hear from our public speaker on this item. And then I see a number of board members have comments.
Thank you Chair Fletcher. We have one request to speak in opposition to this item. Like to invite forward Audra Morgan. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
Audra Morgan, so since 2017, you completed three hundred and sixty-eight units. Is that productive? I mean, is it? I don't know. But you got six hundred and seventy-three under construction and another three hundred and fifty-six to be constructed or rehabilitated in the next one to four years. How often do people leave California? Like, what's the rate of that compared to what you're building, which isn't really that much? I mean, like, I feel like you guys just act like you're fixing problems when you're really not. It's like busy work. It's like, let's just do three hundred units and that'll take care of like the people needing a home and stuff like that. I mean, and you're spending $567 million. I mean, do you guys have any like respect for money? I don't know. I just...
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Mr. Chair, appreciate it. And, you know, this is the fifty million that came out of the trust fund that this board set aside. And this is, and so I think it totals almost fourteen hundred homes with the fifty million that we put in there. And then also, I just want to say thanks to staff for the presentation and for doing this. And then you were able to leverage another five hundred million of other people's money. So it's like ten to one, almost, how much money we were able to bring in with the fifty million that we put aside for affordable housing. So, you know, great job on that. I think that's when we can put skin in the game and then we can multiply that by many, many times with other people's money that's from outside the region. That's good. Just real quickly, can you tell me how rent is charged? You don't have to explain the whole formula to me, but is it really just based on the individuals or the people that gave a testimony today? You look at their income and you base the rent based on their income or a certain percentage of it? Could you, in a nutshell, kind of give me that, remind me how that works?
Thank you Supervisor. So ultimately, each property is financed on setting aside a structure to help certain target populations. Those populations may be divided up by their percentage of area median income. So, an individual making sixty percent area median income as a fixed rent price, someone making thirty percent area median income will have a much lower rent charged. So an average rent in our region may be six, seven, eight hundred dollars lower than a market rate rent and potentially even greater difference for units that are set aside for extremely low-income individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you Chair. I want to thank the staff for all your hard work on this and bringing it forward. There are still improvements to the process and the elements of the program that need to happen, some of which the board is going to be addressing in items later today. But for this, what I liked about best about this report is it illustrated how much we've achieved thus far on the affordable housing front, and thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Anderson. I will make a motion to receive the report. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by myself, seconded by Vice Chair Vargas to receive the report. Again, thank you to staff and team for many years of work. We know we have more to do. We're always looking for new ways to more effectively invest the funds we have to try and help housing affordability, but appreciate the effort. With that, let's call the roll, or please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
All right, we're at eleven o'clock. We're going to break at eleven-thirty. Let's go to Agenda Item Six. This is a housing item brought forward jointly by Supervisor Lawson Reamer and Supervisor Anderson. We'll hear the presentation and then we will get into our speakers. We will get as far as we can until about eleven-thirty and then we will break and pick back up where we were. But we'll start with Supervisor Lawson Reamer and then go to Supervisor Anderson for any introductory comments they'd like to make.
Great, thank you so much. I just would like to start by moving the adoption of Item Six. And I'm going to address my comments and my PowerPoint presentation to both Items Six and Seven together. Let me start with an overview of these items and their intent. First, I'd like to thank my colleague Supervisor Anderson for partnering with me on Item Six. Item Six will help us take immediate action, allocating an additional twenty million into the Innovative Housing Trust Fund. This is enough to finance four hundred to six hundred affordable housing units as quickly as possible. It will also improve how the trust fund itself operates, based on community feedback. With your support for this item, we can award funds faster, address equity and environmental justice disparities, and prioritize projects that are built sustainably, near transit, and on county-owned land. I also would like to thank my colleague, Vice Chair Vargas, for partnering with me on Item Seven. Her vision and focus on equity and improving access to equitable housing for all San Diegans is a vital ballast for this board in all the work that we do. So thank you so much for that. Item Seven is about what the county can do in the medium to long term. We are at a crossroads. We could do nothing on housing and let Sacramento decide our housing future. We could do the wrong thing on housing and let developers pave over our open spaces while digging ourselves deeper into climate catastrophe and fueling deadly wildfires. Or we can do the smart thing on housing and adopt bold new tools to build the housing we need in the places we want it. These items today are the first of a number that I will be bringing forward over the coming months to tackle our housing crisis in a forward-looking way that promotes equity and shared opportunity, protects our quality of life, and safeguards our ecosystems and our climate for future generations. From the pandemic to wildfires to, most recently, climate change, the county is now taking leadership in managing crises. The housing crisis must be no different. The actions before you today represent a new vision for housing, a vision where the county is front and center in developing local solutions, not just for the unincorporated areas, but in partnership with the entire region. The housing market, jobs market, and local economy are not constrained by city limits, and neither can be our housing solutions. This is about regional cooperation and regional solutions, so we locals, not Sacramento, are in charge of our own housing future. When we talk about the housing crisis, some people think the answer is to just start building more and more and call it a day. But that is not what we are talking about here. These items are not about building more housing just anywhere. They are about building the right kind of housing that working-class San Diegans can afford and building it in the right places so we do not deepen our climate crisis, undermine our communities and quality of life, or increase fire risks in the process. What we are doing today is looking at the root factors that make housing so expensive, like the cost of land and the cost of construction, and beginning to develop solutions to address these challenges. This is important because if we continue to ignore these root causes of the housing crisis, we will be left with just putting a Band-Aid on this problem. We will be spending more money at the end of the pipeline and getting fewer and fewer results. So we are requesting your support today in pursuing transformative tools that will begin to build more homes for the people that the current market does not work for, that the current market is failing, for working-class, middle-class, and low-income individuals across San Diego County. And doing it not in rural areas that increase resident commutes and create new fire risk, but instead making it easier to build close-to-jobs transit and neighborhood amenities. So with that, I'd like to begin my PowerPoint presentation. The high cost of housing impacts everyone. Too often policymakers talk about, quote, "affordable housing" in a very narrow sense, meaning subsidized apartments and tax credit programs. But we all know that the high cost of housing is an issue that impacts all San Diegans, from single-parent households to older adults living on fixed incomes, from younger generations struggling to access first-time homeownership, to families being priced out of our region. Housing impacts our educational outcomes, our health outcomes, and the outlook of our regional economy and our small-business communities. Next slide. Yeah, thank you. Further, we know that housing is a critical factor in addressing poverty and inequality. Building also accounts for forty percent of the carbon emissions, so will become a critical part of our path to sustainability in our region. And our continued economic vitality across San Diego County depends on retaining a diverse and skilled workforce. But we are losing thousands of people each year who are moving out due to the high cost of living. Next slide. It's conventional wisdom that the housing crisis is just bad everywhere. But to be honest, our housing crisis is uniquely bad. The San Diego region ranks third worst in the nation in terms of housing cost burden. Next slide. And housing cost burden is felt across the income spectrum. It is certainly most acute at the lower and middle portions of the income spectrum. But housing cost burden is felt by everyone, including those of moderate income. Half of renters are housing cost burden, half. Renters are impacted extraordinarily by the high cost of housing, with over half being cost burdened. A person making minimum wage would have to work a hundred and twenty-five hours per week to be able to afford the current average asking rent of $2,075 a month. Moreover, homeownership is increasingly out of reach. Over one-third of homeowners are also cost burdened. Home prices have increased by twenty percent year over year. And the percent of people who can afford to buy a home, especially first-time homebuyers, is at the lowest point in decades. Next price, next slide, thank you. Home prices have increased much faster than incomes. The relationship between home prices and average incomes is a core part of the problem. Over the past decade, incomes have increased by just twenty-five percent, while home prices have surged by a hundred percent. In other words, if you do not already own a home, the likelihood of homeownership is increasingly out of reach. We are currently missing eighty-eight thousand homes across San Diego County. And most of these missing homes are the equitable housing we need for working-class and middle-class families. The high cost of housing is driven in part by our longstanding inability to build enough housing to meet our community's needs. Over the past decade, we only built enough housing to accommodate forty-five percent of the need. Most of these are missing units among middle-class and lower-income households. Next slide, please. We need another eighty-three thousand homes to keep up with population growth through 2029. So that's an additional eighty-three thousand homes to keep up with population and job growth over the next eight years, in addition to the missing eighty-eight thousand homes. This translates to a need for twenty-one thousand four hundred and sixty new homes each year. When was the last time we built that scale of housing? Not since 1988. Last year, we built only nine thousand five hundred units across the region, less than half the housing we need. So it is time to have a frank, honest, and data-driven conversation about the scale of this housing crisis in order to move towards solutions. Next slide, please. So why doesn't more housing get built? That has to be our first question. What is the root cause of this crisis? We've diagnosed four drivers. The first issue is the price of land. Land is extremely expensive in San Diego County, accounting for roughly sixty percent of the price of a home, among the highest in the nation. And the price of land has surged far faster than inflation or income growth, up eighty-eight percent in recent years. Next slide. Another key driver, the cost of construction. We have to drive down the cost of construction in order to address the housing crisis. There are many factors in this equation, from the ever-increasing cost of materials, like the skyrocketing cost of lumber over the past months, to difficult land use regulations that cause uncertainty in the development process and increase the time and cost of housing construction. Next slide. The other big issue we have to look at is the income and wealth gaps in our community and our region. Housing supply is only half the equation. We also have to look at income and wealth because for first-time homebuyers, one of the biggest barriers is having enough savings for a down payment, as well as having enough income to support the mortgage. For so many young families, ballooning student debt and overall wage stagnation have made it increasingly difficult to access homeownership. Low incomes are also a part of the equation. Almost twenty-five percent of San Diegans make under $35,000 per year. And our housing market definitively cannot produce housing at rents low enough for families to afford without additional subsidies. Next slide. And the final issue I want to point out is our lack of regional approaches. When it comes to housing, we have to look at the bigger regional picture. We are a regional economy, a regional jobs market, and a regional employment market, and a regional housing market. We need to coordinate and partner to develop regional-scale solutions that reflect the reality of our integrated regional economy. Next slide. So what we are proposing in Item Seven is a research agenda that aligns with these four key drivers: land, cost of construction, low incomes, and low wealth, and the need for regional approaches. These seven buckets are outlined here. We will be coming forward in the coming months with additional initiatives to address this housing crisis. This is just a brief introduction to the concepts that are spelled out in more detail in our board letters. So I will end where I began, with the people who are most impacted by our broken housing system: working-class and middle-class families, nurses, teachers, and childcare workers, born-and-raised San Diegans like myself and my daughter, trying to stay in this region, the immigrants and entrepreneurs investing in our regional dynamism. The cost of inaction is simply too high. It's high time for the county to take a leadership role in managing the housing crisis, partnering and coordinating with local stakeholders to develop transformative solutions. So it's with that, I would like to urge my colleagues to support both Items Six and Seven and work together- seven and work together as we develop a broad, bold, broad agenda to address our housing crisis in San Diego County. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Lawson Reamer. So we're going to do six, and then we'll, after we finish six, we'll come back and do seven, but totally appropriate to speak about. Let me ask Supervisor Anderson if you'd like to make any introductory comments before we hear from the public speakers. If not, we'll go straight to them.
I'm going.
Okay, perfect. Let's go to, let's go to our public speakers on item six.
Thank you Chair Fletcher. We have two requests to speak in person and six requests to speak by phone. Also known for the record that we received 86 comments on this item, 80 in favor, one in opposition. Any members of the public that requested to speak by phone on this item, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers, like to invite forward, we have one in favor, one in opposition. Like to invite forward Sandra Martinez and Audra Morgan. You'll each have two minutes to address the board, and then we will hear from those that requested to speak by phone. So again, Sandra Martinez and Audra Morgan.
Audra Morgan, so. I mean, people are moving out way faster than you can even provide these units. If you need over almost 100,000 units, and over the past decade you've only produced enough available housing to meet 12%, I mean, it's just quite ridiculous. Nothing that you guys do is productive enough to fight the amount of people leaving and to make them want to stay here. It's like, wait and stay while we produce like really not very many places, but just wait because they'll be done at some point. I mean, and then you want to spend $5 billion for research and policy development. I mean, what about raising people's wages? You're like keeping them in poverty, and then they don't have places to live. And where are you going to put these places? Are they, they're going to have to move? It's costing them to have to spend more money. Yeah, I just think it's just not productive. And did you even put out like competitive bids? Maybe there's people who build faster than what you're using.
Yeah, it's lower costs.
I mean, yeah, or lower costs. I mean, like, why can't you change what the rent is? Why can't you like mitigate in other ways as opposed to like developing things that are going to take a long time, and people are leaving at faster rates than you can even accomplish building, I mean, 99,000 units, and you're doing like 400 in four years? It's just not very productive. It's kind of like you guys doing your job.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, everybody. I'm Sandra Martinez, glad to be here today. You know, I've been coming to these board meetings, and all I do is see money being thrown everywhere, and it's this grant, that grant, this trust, that trust, but you know the money comes from us, right? There is no free money. So when I was looking at this thing, you know, San Diego's a great community, and we do have a housing shortage. But you know, one of the real reasons we have that housing shortage is because it's expensive, right? And why is it expensive here? Because of government regulations. The cost of constructing a house in California far exceeds than any other state, except for maybe New York. I haven't checked on that. But it's ridiculous. You've got rules, regulations, you've got, I mean, I'm not a contractor, though my family has done that, but everything from the government fees, the compliance requirements, the inspections, and the workers' comp rates for contractors and construction is ridiculous. The cost of housing in San Diego County would be about 50% of what it currently is if the government were not over-regulating it. So the real change needs to come from the government, and you need to change your policies locally and statewide.
We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We call in speakers by the last four digits of their phone number. You will hear a notification that your call has been unmuted. You will then need to press star six to unmute your phone. We'll ask you to please state your name for the audio record. I'll remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. And if you could please identify the first caller.
Our first caller is 0408, 0408. Please press star six to unmute.
Hi Supervisors, my name is Madison Coleman with Climate Action Campaign, a member of the San Diego Green New Deal Alliance. Over the past decade, the county has only met 18% of its RENA affordable housing targets. The county has an opportunity to align its funding resources to address both immediate and long-term housing priorities and increase affordable housing production across the region through enhancing the Inclusionary Housing Trust Fund program. We urge the county to move $20 million into the IHTF to be used for financing affordable housing projects, and $5 million for transformative housing research, policy development, and piloting new programs and initiatives. These funds could facilitate the development of approximately 400 to 600 affordable housing units. We also recommend amending the IHT criteria and performances to increase flexibility and the timing of IHTF awards, prioritizing projects near transit priority and low VNT areas as defined by SB 743, and developing housing on county-owned land, specifically affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 8623, 8623. Please press star six to unmute.
Thank you, good morning. My name is Lori Saldana. I'm a native San Diegan and served in the California Legislature along with Chair Fletcher, who unfortunately, I believe, has left the chamber. But I was chair of the Housing Committee, and one thing we learned at that time was the importance of providing housing to people who are, at this point, unsheltered. And we have literally thousands of those people on the streets of San Diego. And I didn't hear any talk of recuperative or supportive housing in the discussions so far, and we desperately need that for our residents, these people who live in San Diego, work in San Diego, and now are dying on the streets from a combination of violent crime, exposure, heat, and also healthcare conditions, not just COVID, but chronic, ongoing healthcare, diabetes, other issues that affect people who are extremely low-income and don't have access to healthcare. It would be very helpful for this board to provide an update on what's happening with Project Room Key. How are we providing people with immediate housing in hotel rooms? I knew sources done a report on this. The county commissioned a report, a follow-up report, after a person committed suicide and wasn't found for five days in a county-administered hotel. If this county is serious about providing emergency housing, they need to do it today and get people out of congregate shelters and into Project Room Key hotel rooms. When I chaired housing, I wasn't clear on how basic and fundamental it was to have people in safe housing, but you cannot advance, you cannot progress in your life or in the life of your family if you are not safely housed. And the county is the number-one provider of healthcare and human services, and to this day, they are failing. You are failing, and people are literally dying on the streets as a result.
Thank you.
These long-term plans are important.
Thank you.
Please do in housing now.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is 2888, 2888. Please press star six to unmute.
Good morning Chair Fletcher and Supervisors. My name is Joanne Francisca. I'm the Managing Attorney at Legal Aid Society of San Diego. On behalf of Legal Aid and our Executive Director Gregory Knoll, I would like to voice our strong support for agenda item six, to advance immediate and long-term housing priorities through the Innovative Housing Trust Fund. San Diego's housing crisis has only worsened, been worsened by the pandemic. There's a growing shortage of housing, particularly for lower- and middle-income households. Home prices have skyrocketed, outpacing wages and pricing many would-be homebuyers out of the market. Rental prices are at an all-time high, increasing the percentage of households that are rent burdened. When people are rent burdened, they cannot accumulate savings to buy a house or to put away in case of an emergency. Many households are effectively one illness, job interruption, or car repair away from losing their home. Many of them seek our help when that happens. Lack of affordable housing and poverty go hand in hand, with one feeding the other. Lack of affordable housing leads to evictions. Evictions negatively impact jobs, health, credit, and children, as well as cause debt that can take years for people to dig themselves out of. San Diego needs to act now to fund and accelerate affordable housing production, as well as to fund research and new programs that will lead to comprehensive, thoughtful, systemic solutions to our housing crisis. I thank the Board of Supervisors for taking action to address this and urge you all to vote yes on six.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 6872, 6872. Please press star six to unmute.
Good afternoon. My name is Grace Martinez, and I'm the Director of San Diego APE, the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. I'm calling in support of item number six. San Diego is in a housing crisis, as everyone has mentioned. However, we need to ensure that housing is accessible to everyone in San Diego. There are three Ps to housing. There's preserving naturally occurring affordable housing, there is protecting and making sure that there are clear laws between landlords and tenants to make sure that everyone has dignified and dignified and stable housing, and production, but making sure that production is done on the community's terms. The items proposed by Supervisor Lawson Reamer can help define the housing's county, define the county's housing values, and identify barriers and opportunities to housing construction. There's no one solution to the housing crisis, as I mentioned, but it's important that we prioritize housing for families who have historically and currently priced out of housing by creating dignified and affordable housing and homeownership opportunities, utilize county land for real affordable housing in our communities, and preserve and produce affordable housing that's near transit and major highways so that people can get to work. I'm urging the Board of Supervisors to support item six as well as seven. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 4353, 4353. Please press star six to unmute.
Hi, my name is Ricardo Flores. I'm the Executive Director of LISC San Diego, the local initiative support corporation. We are a community development and financial institution, and we are also calling in support of item six. We feel very strongly that the direction going by Supervisor Lawson Reamer is very important, that we start to think and start to move in creating more housing for our communities and adding that density and being thoughtful about how we do that. So we strongly support item six and all of the other items also related to housing affordability from today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 2021, 2021. Please press star six to unmute.
My name is Laura Nunn, and I'm calling on behalf of the San Diego Housing Federation. We are pleased to support items six and seven on today's agenda and would like to thank Supervisors Lawson Reamer, Vargas, and Anderson for their leadership in bringing these policies to the board for consideration. While housing needs call for significantly more, we strongly support the proposal to place $20 million into the Innovative Housing Trust Fund and are pleased to see the proposed changes to the criteria and preferences for the Fund's NOFA. These changes will make the region more competitive for federal and state housing funds, as well as ensure that these dollars have an impact on the housing needs in communities across the county. We suggest that the, that the county dedicate all or a portion of funds received from the redevelopment resolution as a dedicated source of revenue for the fund. The county can also dedicate the majority of funds it receives from the state's permanent local housing allocation as an ongoing local source. We also strongly support the transformative housing solutions that advance equity, sustainability, and affordability for all proposals. Adopting a database approach to addressing housing needs that identifies the scale of the problem will lead us to solutions that rise to that scale. We look forward to bringing along the expertise of our members, the affordable housing sector, to participate in and support this process. We support the proposal to develop a stakeholder outreach plan to inform this process and recommend that in addition to the list outlined in the board letter, individuals with lived experience of homelessness are included in stakeholder outreach. We thank you for your leadership on these important housing policies and for your consideration of our comments. We look forward to continuing to work with the County of San Diego to increase our region's supply of affordable homes. Thank you.
Chair Fletcher, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. We've got about seven or eight minutes before we break, so let me just start with my colleagues. We'll get as far in the discussion as we can, and then we will break and pick up where we were. So we'll go first to Vice Chair Vargas.
Thank you Chair Fletcher. So I wanted to say thank you to Supervisor Anderson and Lawson Reamer for bringing this item forward. Absolutely, the housing crisis in San Diego is growing, and more and more families are being displaced and facing homelessness. As you know, San Diego County's low-income renters spend more than 50% of their income on rent, leaving little left for basic necessities like food, transportation, health expenses, and other needs. And so, as we heard earlier, the innovative innovation, Innovative Housing Trust Fund has reserved and created a lot of affordable housing here today. We, I thank the staff for all the great work that they did around that. And it was important that we set aside money for research and data-driven approaches. And so I wanted to request that, and I know, I guess any clarification, I wanted to see if we can do this, because I think $5 million in, should be left in the Housing Solution Fund, so that we, that was created during our budget cycle to implement pilot programs and initiatives that are not restricted by the Innovative Housing Trust Fund ordinance, right? And, and I would like to ask staff to come back with ideas and, and really, so that we can allow flexibility in that funding so that it can be expanded in the future. And so I know, when I read item threat, three, I understand, I mean, I think it's item three within the initiative, the proposed board letter, I just want to make sure that it's actually kept in the Housing Solution Fund and not necessarily on here.
Yeah, just real quick, Vice Chair Vargas, can you just restate your proposed change?
Yes, to keep $5 million in the, in the Housing Solution Fund that was created during our budget cycle to implement pilot programs and initiatives that are not restricted by the Innovative Housing Trust Fund ordinance.
Yeah, Supervisor Lawson Reamer?
Yeah, so just, thank you. I actually completely support that, and if that wasn't clear, that's the intent. So the idea here is 20 million is for the Innovative Housing Trust Fund, and $5 million is set aside for, like you said, sort of all these areas of pilot programs and being able to have space for innovation. That's item six, and then item seven, which we're obviously not voting on now, but which is next, there's, we're looking to use a little over a million of that for this, for the, the transformative research agenda outlined, but there would still be, I don't know, something like 3.8 left or something like that in that $5 million bucket. So that is actually, that's definitely the intent, and I totally support that. So if that wasn't clear, I want to make sure it's clear.
Okay, good. Let's go to Supervisor Desmond.
Well, I just muddied it for me, but anyway, the...
Basically, it's just clarification on recommendation three, that the $5 million can be used both for the research, policy development, implementation, along with pilot programs that might come out of that.
Yeah, well, I think, Vice Chair Vargas and I, I think we're on the same page, and I think it was just a point of clarification that we're keeping $5 million aside to ensure that we have the ability to do those pilot programs and that we're not taking it out of that Housing Solutions Fund.
So how much would be going to research, then? I guess what I'm kind of confused about the $5 million for research.
Okay, no. There is, the board letter in front of us has 20 million for the Innovative Housing Trust Fund, and it keeps $5 million aside for other things.
May I ask that you just lean a little further in? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. Sorry, so the board letter, item six in front of us, has 20 million for the Innovative Housing Trust Fund, and $5 million that's set aside, that stays in the Housing Solutions Fund as the, that we had allocated in the budget, that $5 million is available to do many things with. So it doesn't budget it, it doesn't allocate it, just leaves it there for things that will come in the future, because we know housing is a crisis, and we're going to continue needing to pilot programs as, as opportunities arise. So that's what's in the board letter, in the recommendations in the board letter today. There's no change, just $20 million in the Innovative Housing Trust Fund and $5 million set aside for future research, but maybe not research, maybe it's a pilot program. I mean, we had a really great idea for a pilot program come, I think it was last meeting, this preservation pilot, and so it's that kind of thing that could be funded out of that bucket.
Okay, so I got a better clarification, because I did think $5 million was a lot for research.
It's not all for research.
I get that. I get that now, yeah. And, and I would rather see the money go towards actually building housing units if we can, so it is, hey.
Hey.
Hey, you're interrupting me.
He's doing great. He doesn't need your help. He's got it, he knows his point. He doesn't, he doesn't need anyone's help.
So, okay, but, sometimes I do, but, the, I just, okay, because that concerned me, the $5 million, so I'd rather see it going towards housing. So you say it still can go towards housing or pilot programs or things like that.
Exactly.
To encourage housing. How about if any of the research work could be done in-house? In other words, if our Housing and Development Group or any other department might be able to do some of that research in, I don't, I don't know, I'm giving you more jobs, but if some of that could be done in-house so that we don't have to spend $5 million outside?
I just want to clarify, there's not $5 million here for research. There's 20 million for the Innovative Housing Trust Fund and $5 million for all sorts of other things we might do in housing: pilot programs, preservation, research. other things we might do in housing: pilot programs, preservation, research. It's a bucket that we don't need to then unpack our entire budget and go to budget appropriations for something that we know is a priority for us to look at on an ongoing basis. So the board letter from us today is about 20 million for innovative housing, 5 million for potentially pilot projects or other things that are going to come before us over the next 11 months before we get to budget next July. Our next item that's coming, Item 7, allocates--
Don't, you're going to confuse me. Let me say on 6.
We'll do 6, and then we'll come back and do 7.
I'm sorry. I appreciate, but I guess it's not that clear to me that that was the intent for the research dollars. So if we can use some of that money, so some of it could be used to build units--
Absolutely.
Absolutely, 100%.
Okay, thank you very much.
Cool.
Thank you. I wanted that clarification.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Anderson.
I have a question of staff. Yeah, I complained, I couldn't hear people. Then I keep my mic off. I have a question of staff through the chair. I was wondering, what programs do we have in the works to streamline affordable housing development now?
So Supervisor, thank you for your question. So ultimately, we work with our own planning development services to look at the current housing situation in our county. We continually work with developers and looking at new opportunities for development, such as the Levon Street Development that used a different construction method for development. We also look at accessing existing county land to make that available for individuals to be able to, for developers, to be able to create housing on former county properties. So incentivizing housing through the Housing Development Fund, incentivizing housing by making excess county land available. We've also acquired properties that have been released through a competitive process for developers to be able to then bid on those properties, take the property over, and then develop more affordable housing. So all of those investments and methods of incentivizing development are what we use so that the public-private partnership can net us more units in this very expensive market.
Great. Thank you very much. I want to thank Supervisor Lawson Reamer for bringing this item forward with me. I reached out to stakeholders who vocalized tremendous support for the Innovative Housing Trust Fund. They have also expressed the need that the funds are used at the beginning of the process in order to secure state and federal funding for the projects. So I'm happy that this addresses that criteria, giving the trust fund more increased flexibility. I'm great with the board letter, but I also wanted to point out that we need to also still focus on county, still focus county resources, where the county would get full credit for our regional housing needs assessment goals. While we have a housing need, we still have county goals that we have to achieve. And so I want to make sure we don't lose focus on that. And then finally, I'm looking forward to getting an update later from PDS regarding all the work to help streamline affordable housing development in leveraging the Innovative Housing Trust investment.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Anderson. Thank you, Supervisors Lawson Reamer and Anderson for bringing this forward. I see Supervisor Lawson Reamer and Supervisor Desmond both with the request to speak. Is that from earlier, or if you have additional comments?
Well, I forgot to mention, or one of the speakers brought it up. You know, government regulations is about 45% of the cost of housing. And so this was a study that Point Womah Nazarene put out, it's like five or six years ago or maybe longer, but it was very, and it's probably grown. I think it was like 45% or 48% of the cost of house was government regulation. So if there are areas we can look in to, you know, to get housing built, that if the government can get the heck out of the way and allow it to happen, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. So, go ahead.
I just want to correct, that study didn't say it was 45% of the cost of housing. It says it was 45% of the cost of housing construction. So 60% of the cost of housing is land, then of the remaining 40%, about 20% is the permitting process. Then there's a remainder that has to do with labor and materials, so just--
Still too much.
Totally. But let's just be accurate, right?
Got it. All right, so we have a motion by Supervisor Lawson Reamer, seconded by myself, to approve the recommendations in Agenda Item 6. Not seen any additional requests to speak. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously, with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
We're going to recess for the lunch break. We will reconvene around 1 PM. Thank you all, we stand to recess.